Allahu anpegi Lego, womhaga ti nabaswaga chelego. Sizo okthoma njenga nje umtlanga noe tu sina malungwa allahu kahlukenele enkambi sana nao avela e komiti ni sizo oktemba malungana na yo. Ngendaba e malungana ninachan je ngapambo kutisi thoma wenzanjalo sizo vuma ingo ma eschab.
Nga sambala me ngingunolitwa antobongwana ngiveela e Eastern Cape u ngitu nywe e parlamente e Sewa Africa ngichamele umteto mlingwa wenda ba eszoy temba yoktathwa wena.
And then starting from my far right.
Good morning everybody. My name is Samantha Graham Marre. I am a member of the Democratic Alliance.
Lochani, ika malami ngigusamanta marre ngichamele ngililunga le Democratic Alliance.
I serve on the portfolio of public works and infrastructure.
Ngisevenza wumteto mlingwa we itangala segelo ne portfolio komiti wumtangala segelo ne noktathwa wenda.
I come from the Eastern Cape, from a town called Graft Renet.
Ngitavuka e pumalanga Kapa.
And I would like to thank everybody for availing themselves today to speak to us about this bill. Thank you.
Tanda okthokaza boka banda beze la namtlangi sugu tisi zoktemba ngendaba wumteto mlingwalu.
Good morning everybody.
Ngialochisa noke namtlangi xeni.
My name is Madeleine Hittlin and I too am from the Democratic Alliance.
Minage ngigunmadeleine true na me ngiveela ku Democratic Alliance.
It's really wonderful to see so many people in the hall today. I am a member of the portfolio committee on public works and infrastructure.
Gukarisa wamamba la wokwana boki abanda bakon na namtlangi sibekotu na me ngokfana wongiveela wumteto ngikambi sana ne portfolio komiti yoktathwa wena hanwumtangala segel.
And I hail from Midrand in Gauteng.
Ngisala e Midrend e Gauteng.
Dumelamba hayucho. Yo bua mo ki matapelosiwi sa hoxyo kole kole kokonla EFF ke savamo komitinga public wexen ke tja ke tlacha aku Kimbali okonodra incape.
Minage ngichamele i Economic Freedom Fighters ngibu ya e limpopo Kimbali na me ngikamba ngisevenza giwo umnyango w portfolio komiti lo wenda ba zoku iswa noktathwa wena.
Good morning everyone. I'm Sharon van Skalvek, a member of the African National Congress deployed to this portfolio committee. And I am from Uppington in the Northern Cape. And I am glad to be with you today, thank you.
Minage ngigusharol van Skalvek ngibu ya Uppington in Northern Cape ngitu nywe e African National Congress na me ngiveela giwo umnyango lo woku iswa wena.
Sanbonani. E ika ma ulindia mchoba. E member yale komiti. Ngisuka wazul nadal ngitu nywe e African National Congress.
Sanbonani. Ika malamu Elfaso Ramatibula. Ngili lunga le parlament. Ngipinde futu ngibe ilunga lale komiti ekona la namtlangi ngapansi kobuhuli bagamama unolita. Nchoba ngimela nage ngimele inlanga noya bandu e African National Congress. Ngabo. Can you hear me? Ya, nageru dumela ngokofela. Esne bitova khalé from Amandevale, where living law traditional council representing Koshi. What happens eh eh when this was arranged, we were urged to come as early as possible. Now what happens, we were about eh almost 100 kilometers from our eh where we come from. Now mostly here are elders, they haven't had their breakfast and they are taking pills. Now they are on my neck eh. Now we said kova khalé, you said we should come early, we came early and only to find eh eh we are seeing water only now. How can you assist us in this regard? Because they also eh eh intend rather going back or going to shops to go and have something eh to eat because they haven't had their breakfast ever early since this morning.
The staff will engage with you. I think they have explained what is happening, but they will explain again to you. Eh Ms. Martinez eh.
Batshobazon chelepa.
You're not going to speak here, you will explain to him, thank you. Um we are here eh joined by the councillors of the municipalities around us. Also members, our colleagues from the national assembly. But I have been given only this list, still waiting for other lists to come in.
Sizela pake si kamba nama councila nama lunga allahu kahlukenele emikanju eh shuka shukelewe ya ma komiti empagatini nginigelewe nanandi illaha ne le chelo enkabanga kuti kunabanyi esabali ndilewa basesa waeli.
We have Honorable Adrian Ross, who is the Member of Parliament eh from the DA.
Sinomshoni chwa Adrian Ross o lilunga le parlamente o segela DA.
We have councillor Shubon Mula, councillor Rodney Mabusela.
Sinokancela Shubon Mula, ukancela Rodney Mashwela.
Councillor Peter Miller.
Ukancela Peter Miller.
Councillor Owen Lamini.
Ukancela Owen Lamini.
They are all from DA.
Boka naboba avela ku Democratic Alliance.
We have MPL Honorable Peach from DA.
Sinomshoni chwa we MPL o Peach ubaya DA.
Once I get all other names, I will introduce the message.
Kuzaku tige nasengwato le woke amanyamabi iso ngibe thule nabongentele fana.
We are here as the portfolio committee.
Sizela pake ngi portfolio committee.
To seek your views.
Sizo thola imbono yeeno.
On the expropriation bill number 23 of 2020.
Malungana umteto mlingwa woku iswa onamka woktathwa wena ha kwa 2020.
A bill which seeks to repeal Act Number 63 of 1975, the Expropriation Act.
Umteto mlingwa o shose uka miselela lo umteto wama.
Expropriation Act.
Umteto mlingwa woku iswa woktathwa wena.
An act that was passed on by the previous government, the apartheid government.
Umteto apasiswa ngohulume ndewa lokya we apartheid.
Which protected the rights of the individuals as we all know that that government looked at certain people through race.
Ogu ngohulume nde ebega viga viga la abanunga eskates o malungana nje jamo lishanga labo.
An act that doesn't talk to the constitution that we adopted as a country in 1996.
Umteto onga vumela nina loko esakwa mugela tinajenge eschaba o 1996.
So this bill seeks to repeal that.
Bekotuge umteto mlingwalu uhlose uka miselela loko.
This bill also seeks to provide the expropriation of property for public purpose or public interest.
Umteto mlingwalu uhlose kodu noklinsheka namka ugnige la ngese nse lo malungana nokliwa wenda o wumtangala segel.
And each where instances, expropriation with nil compensation may be appropriate in public interest.
Bekotuge umteto mlingwalu wenzako be na la kutsho keka kwanakuti womhaga tinawo ungené le uveze wawo amazi o malungana nokliwa wenda.
And to provide uniform standards of dealing with expropriation by all the expropriating authorities.
Nognige la nginkambi solawo lo esfanelego eskambi sana na labo abazi impati manla zokliwa wenda.
This is the third phase of the process that we have undergone as the pub, the portfolio committee.
Lili lika tango namkalishanla listatu esesiltetegoti najenge portfolio committee.
It started by us eh seeking written submissions.
Yasunguluangi eti sifuna in imlilo namka ingongwe ilo esvelago es tuinyawa babantu.
And we held over virtual platform oral presentations from individuals and organizations.
Sabamba ne mbutano lapo be skulumakona nabantu si babo na obuso nobuso malungana na zo ingongwe ilo esnjalo.
And now we are here for public hearings.
Namtlangi sige sizela nasizo oktemba indaba evela namka amazi womhaga tilapozokwa alisakwa na amazi zawawo.
We have invited all stakeholders in the form of political parties.
Si meme boki abashanga ye li na babambi ka za wuti bazos chelepa ewenzinjalo.
Civic organization.
Inlanga nozangi msiteleni.
Organized labor.
Illo namka umkanjwa bassevenzi.
Religious leaders.
Abo beze kollo abato spambili beze kollo.
Traditional authorities.
Nempati manla zezza masigo nenda.
And all stakeholders that have not been mentioned.
Wulanganisina boboki abashanga ye li esngaka kulume ngabo.
So we are here to hear your views on this bill.
Okusilete la nage namtlangi sisi zoguzwa imbono yeeno ne ingongwe ilo zeeno wumteto mlingwalu.
Whether you support it or you oppose it.
Okuti nichama nao namka nyakashela nao.
We are therefore going to point you to come and speak.
Ngenvakwa loku ge sizon nginila yutuba lo wuti nize nizo kuluma langa pambi.
We are only given three minutes to speak.
Omundunga monye unigelewe imzu zemtatu wana akwana kuluma.
You can use any of the 11 official languages to express your view.
Ucha puluki lokbereki sananya na ngli pili mwalchumi na ye asemteto enese Sewa Africa.
But please before you speak, you must state your name, the organization that you are coming from.
Gotwa nanga pango kutu kulume sbawa ucho ilanga novela giyo u kulume ne bizola kholizwa kala ibizo ne sbongo ngabo ngapambo wana kuluma.
And state whether you oppose or support the bill and then your reasons.
Ucho nangokanya woku tioya uvuma namka wya ukashela nao umteto mlingwa ukanu beka mabanga waloko.
The ground rules.
Umteto essegelo.
We expect everyone to keep quiet when someone is speaking.
Sili ndelebona woke omundu atule lukabanyana ba kuluma.
Whether the the person speaking expresses the view that you like or you don't like.
Onga kataliseki wana omundu lo kuluma wala ngapambi lo kuluma ngendo o itanda ago namka onga itandi ego.
We expect you to respect that person speaking.
Sili ndelebona umshoni pe omundu oza ba kuluma ngapambi.
We therefore are going to start now.
Ngenvakwa loku ge sisngatoma.
As I'm still waiting for the names of the traditional leaders that are here and the councillors from other political parties and the political leaders. We will introduce them as we go on.
Njengoma nage nsalinde abato sipambili ngokshuka shuka na wabo kusugela kobe geze kollo beze amasi go beze politikinjalo njalo. Sizo uba thula ngogoya ngogoya omunye nomunye naga fika ngapambi.
And can our security please assist us?
Bekotu sbawa na ba figeli be yutu baschelepe kulu.
That all those that are coming eh after we have started there, they must join the side that is empty.
Bonaboki la wabo abafika sistomi li be bazokshala ngapaa inhlalweni esngana babantu.
Can you then please raise your hands?
Sibawa ge nitome ngiparamise izanla.
We're starting on our right.
Si atoma ngisantlen soku.
The first row just next to the wall.
Llangotin lokthoma.
Can you please raise your hand?
Sibawa ni ngiparamise izanla.
You are number one?
Ungewokthoma.
We are on the first row.
Sisengale ilangotin lokthoma.
Number one there by the wall, yes. So there is no other hand there, we come to the second row?
Ngibanga lukuta sikisini sanla sise ilantlen inlande lagu.
Can we get some hands in the second row?
Sibawa izanla ilantlen inlande lagu.
So no one raising a hand there.
Agayeko ngiparamise sanla.
We're coming to the third row.
Sijulele ilantlen listatu.
No one raising a hand there.
Agayeko ngiparamise sanla.
The fourth row, we start with the baba there at the back is number two. The one who has been pointed eh Budi, you come the side.
Sibawa uzenga pambi li Budi.
Eh we're still in the fourth row, no other hand eh than Baba. Baba, kapisme kfa gi sticker oza on this side, please, yes. So there is no other hand in the fourth row, we're coming to the fifth row, you are number three. We're not going to come back if you are not.
Asbuy sanla slulile.
Once you are given the sticker, please come to this side, there are chances for you.
Nasongelewe stikasbawa uzenge llangotini okonjelwa giilo.
Yes, your hand, but if you are eh if you are the member from parliament, you're not going to speak.
Nanga ulilunga le parlamente angreko kulume.
But councillor and MPL, they can speak.
Nne MPL ngibaba zokthoma ba kuluma.
So there is no hand even in this row?
Na la na isanla.
We're coming to this one.
Sizakilili lande lagu ilanla.
Please, please raise your hand when we are in your row because we are going to skip you. Start with that lady.
Sito me ngawe se se move.
I'm coming, I'm coming to this row, I'm still in there.
Ngiseza akilili.
Yes, and then we are in this row.
Sijulele ilantlen inlande lagu.
I know we're coming, put you on that side, yes. Once you get the sticker, you move to this side.
Naso utolile stikasbawa uze ngilangotino konjelwa giilo.
And the one? Okay, we're moving to this row.
Sia ilantlen inlande lagu.
This one, this one. Baba, yes. Please remind me when we have reached ten.
Ngivawani ngunkumbuzo zena sesfinge le wabali chumi siyakuwe move.
One more, okay, at the back. Yes.
Siatokosa.
Thank you. We're only taking ten, we, please, the security must assist us. If someone is coming in, they must not be part of the rows that we have already pointed people at because we're not coming back to those rows, we're going to this side now.
Sibama security aschelepe abangi na wabo bangai emashantlen esekethwe abantu giwo. Sizo oktata abantu ukube gela pambi li lastre ne kon. So sibawa bangina wabo yokshala ngapaa egna kethwa kwanakwa abantu uwenzela wuti naknuktilewa wafunuku kuluma nababaltole yutuba lo wenzanjalo.
And and a reminder, a friendly reminder, you are given only three minutes. We will indicate to you once you exceed the three minutes.
Sianunkumbuzo agingomosa kaka zukuti.
Those that are coming in.
Omunye nomunye unigelewe imzu zemtatu kutakuluma agayeko zokvunye lo wuti ekelengaliwa.
Those that are coming in, don't sit in these rows. One, two, three, four, up to that side. Because we've already pointed people here. You may be sitting in a seat that someone is sitting here, go to that side.
Abasandukfiga sibawa nhlale lengali ngilangotin lesne le sami. uwenzela wuti bazowazo gunketana nintole yutu banaku kuti ekonebe nfunuku kuluma. Gilahama roa amashanu namka tanda tuokthoma seba keti wabantu.
Okay, we were still in this row, we need one more, we were here and we took the. So there's no other hand other than the one that we had here.
Asikwesi ni sanla.
We are in this row. No, no hand in this row, we're not coming back here.
Asbuy sanla slulile asbuy.
So no hand even in this row.
Asikwesi ni sanla.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Siatokosa ungasigi ma we pambili.
She's the last one, so she's supposed to be number ten. How is she the first one to speak?
Ungewokthoma, gozanja nukuti kulume na kanga ngiekebe nukethwe emaswapeli.
If 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 number one has withdrawn, number two becomes number one.
Nanga be ebega kethwe okthoma ukhokrisile lowe esbili beka mlande.
Baba, you are the first one, you are the one who's going to speak first. The the, we we want to do this smoothly. If number one draws number two becomes number one.
Nanga be wesbili, okthoma ukhokrisile wesbili beka mlande la ngoyo tatiskunlasaki eseka.
And 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 if if the second one is not ready to speak, is going to be the last one. Can we correct the issue of the chairs?
Na yu tii lowe wesbili agaga glunge lu kuluma sia chi siyagolande lagu.
Must I start? Dumalang, good morning. Must I start? Yes, thank you. My name is Siobhan Miller. I'm a councillor in the city of Tswani. I'm against the bill for the following reasons. We have serious concerns with this bill because it is vague and it does not give clear clarity and definitions to, for example, what property means. In section, chapter 4, it says, "In the case of if it is property." In other words, it can be far more than land. Sorry, if the, if the, if the property is land. So, this can mean that the gogo who got her RDP house, a lazy ANC councillor decides he wants that as his office. And he comes in and says, "I'm expropriating it in the best interests, interests of the community and in public interest." That is the kind of implications this bill has the way it is now constituted. It needs to be revised. It doesn't help we get a new expropriation bill, which is as bad or if not worse than the previous one. We need a new one that works properly. This is tantamount to giving the minister sweeping powers for one man, one person, one woman, if it's a woman at that time. We need to have a look at the best interests of everybody in this country. We need to make sure that somebody's car isn't expropriated or the song that they wrote is not expropriated. Because that's the openings in this bill. It hasn't been finalized. It hasn't been given clarity and definitions. This bill can sink the struggling economy of this country and cause far-reaching job losses. Because who will pay the bonds? It isn't said in here. Who will take over the mortgage bonds that, that belong to the banks? The banks will collapse. So, our money that is saved in the banks, like VBS, it will disappear. It is no longer their pensions, will disappear. That is what the implications of this bill is as it stands. It will create irreversible debt and irreversible damage to our country as it stands. What does public persons' purpose or interest actually mean? It isn't defined. Section 12 must be rewritten and re-looked at. It is, it is hopelessly open to flaws. This is giving an incapable state sweeping powers to make it a disaster state. We won't have a state of disaster. We will have a disastrous state. It opens the door to land grabs. It opens the door to corruption. This, this is something that where property rights are cornerstone of democracy. We call ourselves South Africa a democracy. This is communism. This is not democracy. Where anybody who has the vague idea of wanting to expropriate property of any kind, not land, of any kind can come in and sweepingly just take away what people have earned with hard work, with saving, and the money will just disappear. We know state capture. This is another form of state capture when you don't define what you are talking about. We've had many bills in the past that have been passed and then we find the flaws. Let's sort the flaws out before we pass another bill that will also just create more problems. Thank you.
Can we please have your name?
I said, I'm councillor Siobhan Miller. Sorry, that's that funny S.I.O.B.H.A.N. Siobhan Miller. Thank you.
Hello, Tswani. Excuse me. I'm patient with you. For... I'm patient with you. I want to talk to you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 Okay. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
My name is Patient Mketi. I am from Motherfonte. It is painful for us to pretend when things like this are happening and we are expect, expected to keep quiet. The land of our forefathers is being taken away from us without any repercussions whatsoever. So, as a young person standing here, I'm pleading with you that you return the land to its rightful owners. Because we have a situation here in Bronkos Strait where you'll find that mines come and they take over our places. And when they take over our places, we are left with nothing and we have no rights whatsoever. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. I'm Leader Erasmus, DA activist and resident here in Bronkos Strait. I do not support this bill. The DA does support land reform and restitution. But this bill is not the answer to land reform. It is merely an incapable state grabbing land for its own use. Land reform has failed because of corruption and not because of existing land reform policy. This bill does not say what will be done with property expropriated. Land reform is only a small part of this. The bill does not define property. And it means that anything, even intellectual property, can be expropriated without compensation. Who is going to decide what is just in compensating the owners? And do owners have recourse to go to the court? What about mortgages? And the money owed to banks? Who is going to take over the mortgage? As a property owner, not land only, but a vehicle, intellectual property? Who will be responsible for my mortgage? For my loan? Who is going to pay the bank? How are we going to prevent the collapse of the banking sector and in turn the economy? Until we know what is defined as property and how the banking sector and the economy is going to be protected, we cannot support this bill. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen and all of the people of Bronkos Strait. I would like to ask you a question. Amandla! What does this mean? It means power to the people. This bill aims to take power away from the people. It wants to give the power to government. This bill seeks to give government the ability to remove any of your property, your hard-earned property, whatever it may be. Not only land, a car, a bank account, a pension, intellectual property, like a song or a painting. Any of those will be open to expropriation by government for whatever reason it sees fit. We cannot allow this bill to continue in its current form. Now, land reform is something that we in the DA feel very strongly about. We need to redress the, the inequalities and the atrocities that happened during the apartheid expropriation of land. We must do that. But this bill does not seek to address these issues. It tries to whitewash a failed land reform process that has been going for 20 years and still shows no fruits. I cannot show one project where communities of people that have been disenfranchised in the past have been benefited in the way that they see fit. How will we go about restructuring our economy if property is no longer that of the, the individual, but that of the state? How will you apply for a loan to send your children to school, to buy a house, or to start a business? This will be catastrophic for the South African economy. It will cause businesses to close and jobs to be lost. And the hardest hit will be the poorest of the poor. This bill also doesn't indicate what the purpose of the expropriation will be by government. This is only to give government the power to do as it sees fit. I ask again, a way, a, 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 a mandla! Power to the people, not to a corrupt government of the ANC within this South Africa. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chair President. My name is Rod Nima Wusela. I'm a PR councillor here in the city of Tswani. Thanks for bringing this hearing here. We want to state categorically clear that we support a land reform and land restitution. However, we don't support the expropriation bill in its current form. Our reasons emanate from the following reasons. The fundamental reason as to why the land reform in this country has failed this much is because mismanagement, corruption, lack of capacity to fast track the process of land reform, and finally, maladministration. So, to deal with all those issues, we don't need another bill that is going to worsen the economic crisis in our country. This bill does not give the right to individual, to the citizen of this country to own land. It gives the government and the state to own the land. And the state would then distribute the land to the people. And I want to ask you a question as to which one, which the state enterprise that you know that is owned by government, that is profiting well? Mention that particular one state enterprise. You have your Eskom, you have your Dinel, you have your SABC, you have your, the airline, the SAA. All of them, they have collapsed under the watch of the state. So, we cannot allow another state enterprise that is going to fail. Our view is that this bill is going to ensure that the property rights are removed from individual. And one cannot expect to have a flourishing economy because there is no one who is going to invest in something that they don't own. You can do a reset. This is just a basic economy. No one who can invest money or resources to something that you don't own. Because that person who is owning that particular land can tomorrow come and say, "No, as a tenant leave." And we are not going to do anything. Secondly, the bill in its current form is silent about individuals or citizens who go and, and, and have a loan to the financial institution and come and buy their property. It's, it's, it's silent about that particular issue. Let me say, I go, I, I secure a 2 million loan and I go, I buy a farm here in Bronkos Strait.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
No, thank you so much. But I think you helped me.
Hello, everyone. I'm Molawa Thomasilumi. I'm from Hama Skral Majane Moshati Wako Shikekana. 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 African National Congress. I'm from Hama Skral Majane Moshati Wako Shikekana. 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 Only 8% have a law. I'm from Hama Skral Majane Moshati Wako Shikekana. 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 I'm from Hama Skral Majane Moshati Wako Shikekana.
I'm from...
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Molawa Situme. I'm from Hama Skral and then in Majane. So, I do agree with what the government has actually planned as far as the land issue is concerned. And then we, you also, actually, we were applauding you right in the beginning when you told us that you are here from different parties. And we also have sent such like parties that we, that will represent us back to the parliament. For an example, we have sent in the ANC there to go and speak for us. What we want to say in one word is that go ahead, please, and expropriate the land. Because this will actually contribute to the removal and the doing away of shacks that we have in our country. So, we are not going to listen to the only the 8% of the people who are living in luxury, who are actually making us living in some difficult conditions like this. We are saying we're going to go ahead and actually grab the land because we want to do away with the shacks themselves. Can you imagine if you were to take away the whole Alexander? What is going to happen? So, we want these people to have lands. We're not going to listen to the people who say we must try and actually have mortgage in our lives. Because this is an impossibility. If somebody has two farms, obviously, this is someone who is wealthy, we are saying take one and give it to somebody who needs land. We are not able to farm. We are not able to grow potatoes. We are not able to grow tomatoes because we do not have the land. We look after the people who have land so that we can have this kind of food to eat. We want to be farmers. Yes, we want the land. So, we are saying, take the land, grab it, give it to us. The 8% who has it all are the people whom we are not going to listen to. So, we want the land to be expropriated without mercy, Chair. And we want to start with those who are rich, who has it all, so that other people can also have what they need. We want to farm. We want to eat. We want to have it all as well. So, I'm saying, don't tell me about Centurion. Suburbian areas like that, give us the land because it is there so that we can be like the rest of the other people. Thank you, Chair.
I'm from... And we branch here ANC Kona La Ekaya. I'm trying to point to you. So, I was just telling you that in the... It's been a while. I'm trying to... 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 Before 1652, we were like, "Oh, no, no, no." Then, 1652, we figured out the war. And then, we saw that, and we thought, "Well, we have to..." Now, in short, in 1887, we figured out the transfall and we thought, "Well, we have to..." And we thought, "Well, we have to..." And we said, 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 "Well, we have to..." Now, corruption, you know, Thomas. We're not going to let it happen. 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 Now, I'm trying to... I'm constructing a... I'm trying to... 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 Because I'm trying to... I'm trying to... Of which, corruption, I'm trying to... Now, to us, we're trying to... We're trying to... Consultation is fair. It's fair because of... Because of... Because of... Consultation. Because of... Because of... Because of... Because of... So, I'm trying to... 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 We have 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 to... So, I'm trying to... 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 I'm trying to...
Thank you very much. My name is Jerimachango. I'm from Sokulumi. I am the chaplain of an ANC branch there. This process... Um this process is something that as people, as a people, we've been long waiting for. And this process is not only fair but it's just. But it's just also in effect that when these people took our land, they never engaged in a consultative process like this government is doing. So what we are saying as a people is that land must be returned to the people. Because on our farms as it stands now, our people are not allowed to build their houses in bricks and mortar. And that is done precisely so that when they want to kick you out, you'll, you won't be leaving any structure or any trace that you've been at that particular place. So we are pleading because when they came in the Transval in eighteen eighty-seven, they banished our kings like King Nyavela and they made them their subjects and took our land. So what we are saying at this moment as eh people is that please give us our land back so that we can have our dignity. Thank you.
Eh revolutionary greetings to my ANC eh members. Those other one I don't know, byete dabezita, oni sama kos. Eh thanks eh comrades and then the colleagues and everyone. First, I would like to say I feel ashamed when the white monopoly tell us the ANC is corrupt. While by the time they grabbed the land of our forefathers, they never see themselves as corrupt. I can tell you in progress by the golf course, they sell that golf course one run. Before the ANC took power in nineteen ninety-four. Cause the Bebas, the Bevon we defend, they wanted to defend that golf course. They sell that golf course one run. For hundred years, they have a lease. But why today, our forefathers in Amakosi are the kings, if they want to take their own land, then there must be a public eh participation? No, 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 it's wrong. When our brothers and sisters in the township, when the brothers in township, they grabbed the land, they see us as crooks. They see us as the people who who are doing eh bad things, eh I don't know, abanabashanyayo. But when the white people took our land, no one is, everyone is clapping their hands. Yo, this is our hero, this is our hero. Now they want to tell us the food security because they own many farmers. We want our land. I I I think comrades eh there in the caucus in the ANC, this thing eh maybe by before we go to local election, they must eh, this bill must pass and then we bring the land and then we go vote, we pick our our big houses. Jenga baning ya ba, skalega mnanje. Masaguma local election is yes jabuli le iland ibui le, we want our land. I'm surprised the DA people, even the DA eh black people, they see ANC as corrupt. But they dance behind the white people who are owning, who have shares in JSE. They don't care, they don't see themselves as eh people. They see us eh, hey, these people are corrupt. Yes, ANC might be corrupt, but the ANC is not corrupt, there's individual that is corrupt. You can't say the ANC is corrupt, I'm not corrupt. So what I say eh eh comrade, what I'm saying is eh we want our land. No white monopoly will tell us we must go to public participation first. We want our land now or never. If they don't want our land, then let's grab it. If they want to shoot us, they must shoot us. Unfortunately, you can't shoot us because we are in government, we are in charge. So if you are in charge, I I I must say to ANC members, please, you are in charge, let's support it. Eh Mayor EFF, you must support this thing, you must not support the white monopoly. Because this thing is ours, let's support each other, this bill good to go. Imagine I must compensate the white person who shoot my father to take that land. Why didn't compensate my father by the time he took that land? No, 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 I guess he cornered it. Those people must be out, they must go back to Dutch, Australia or somewhere. And then we go back. Dabezita, omshaba uwe lezantenzee, nusniye uklene, nisikia lejika makus, sinyabon.
Um I'm, good day, I'm going to address only four points that he spoke in Sizulu. Okay firstly, when he was referring to grabbing the land, he said eh when we grab the land, they call us crazy people. Eh he also mentioned that um they want to grab the land and build houses so they can also have lovely houses and live well. Um he also mentioned that they would like to go and grab the land and do as they wish as well. And they're saying that the kings must be able to have their land. Thank you.
Ya li dumeris. Eh kidumerishe le ba etapele, ba mi kato. Le maoshi le ma rena lemo. Wa walela moke Nathaniel Hobe. Ke tzuakoa Hamanskrall, motule ngai bizwa ngwareki Suruman. Ko omuwa ba etapeleba Suruman. Lo kotala re na ke Suruman Village Council of Elders. Ki ememo, ha otlo kuguro kebulela oru ki monthomunchu, ki abonaga la oru ki mu Afrika. En eh, ha hona mutomunchu, wa kasiteking tokomaniye, this bill. Wasai teking kwa satsibili mo ragola re na oru tzuakai. Katerlo eritwa mogyo na, re le ba tuwa Afrika. Ki na kawo re ba diro le meru komu bochi. Ha ba tzele pele, ba uotolle, ba tu ba tu ba bolele, ba buelele ki di tutu, lidina kaze wu ineng elizabona. Neriruwa di homu, kona ba le re na li di homu, ga di na mo di fula mo hon. Ka oru ba tu ba banzuka re na pleke, we are congested in one area. Ki mi kukufela, ha okunu ku bo na lezi la, la goza ma kaflama chinuku di muliwele, la oze wuri. Ba tuwa ke ba tse na mo mi kukunya ba na ba tse na biya. Ba ti na ko katerla nte wu kunsewa le bialu. Ho re muso we itinkela, we itokomele, we ele toko. Ka oru, heritsiale fase lare na. Basadira eh diligent probing, motabe ngiama roshi Arnold Loona. Re na lidinntwa, za ba tuwa balo lang di na ga, ele ma roshi, baba diere san development. En eh reko le bialu, ha hona zo lolt, pe loltweki riya, ba tuwa ba linkanfa sa ma roshi. Senza le ba toro sutle, ha otsuana le kanako ya apartheid. Banu I make this an emphasis ho re, muso le ger dumelanali bili eh. Nke uwe etele ba tuwa ba epizangori ki ma roshi. Because as I'm speaking standing here, hona le katerlo enchi, le corruption, ebabu walela ngaiyona. Eh di la ki ma roshi, ba na ga na oru le fase, lo ru le mogolo na ke la, ke la bo na as individuals. And then reko walela ka compensation, ya di na, ki putisa ho re, re na re linkanfa sa ma roshi. Re katerla tze rasa okunu ku kira di title, de selling sa re na. Compensation eh yo ya ko an individual or benefit. So I'm saying to the government, anke ba tinkela tabe because di na kaze ma roshi amansiale mo rotsona. Asidina kaze abona ki di communal lands. Ba tu, ba kukuanee, ba reka di plaza, te direk san ki ma buru, ho re ba neka mo. The unfortunate part of it, ko re kana kola ya katerlo, ma buru, ne basa dumelo ho re ba tu. Ba dule kamo hobona ba nyakang, ne barre nyakang omu oitla ba ngelé layer, ngelé captain. And then kona ba le remo tole mu khetile, leto katerloa, ki apartheid ikaba kala kona ba tuwa ba khetile. So I'm hundred percent supporting this document. But I'm saying with a bitter heart to our government, ho re please, mori na renza ma roshi. Nke litlen litlo etela, likwe di loza ba, tuwarba sape la kafasaka katerloa ma roshi. And the corruption ya di reha, ha hona mutwa ba tshara. Because ba itira la kamo hobara tamba epizoriki ma roshi. Banu the government is sadly, nte wu lulang is just a futile exercise. Ka oru kono sala ba tuwa katerla kilega pe, ka apartheid efu tangi bileli apili. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nathaniel Hobe. I am from Hamanskrall in the area called Surman. I am the leader of Surman Village of the elders. Nobody should try to tell me who I am because I'm a black man, you can see that. We want to support this bill because it is going to give us power. We would like the government to go to our chiefs, speak to them. Because there are chiefs who are still using the apartheid methods over our people. We have got people who have bought land from the old system. And this land is being controlled by kings or chiefs. As a result, we are not able to do whatever we like with our land, which is called communal land. The other thing is, we are so congested in our areas. The reason being, we still need land, we want land. Land is available, this bill will help us to make us to get the land. Going back to the title deeds, the title deeds are given to the chiefs or kings. And they control who to give land to instead of giving the community the land that belongs to them. Therefore, we are saying, we are pleading with the government. There's a lot of corruption going into those communal land being controlled by kings. We are appealing to the government to pay this place a visit, talk to them. So that we could get our land back. Thank you.
Let me start by greeting, let me start by greeting everyone in the hall, especially our parliament, our members. Eh aboda besita ma roshi yare na realilocha. Um na, kinna Susan Gobeni from Hamanskrall. Getaha le amandebele alibilo. And I want to say that I support the bill. What makes me to support the bill is that. Eh before I can say much, I say much, let me take this opportunity to say to the guy from DA who said Amanda. Amanda, eh that Amanda. It means that matter abu enakoba tu. The power to the people, not the power to the individuals. Gone are those days where our forefathers were betrayed. The mirror was used to take the land. Our forefathers lost the land because of the mirror. So by then, hence I'm saying I just want to support the bill. And I'm saying to the government that you are doing the best. Just consult more than you are doing. People want the land, people want to live. Ba tu ba nyakaho pila, ba ipidishen. Kalifasi, leo ba tla tze ba ngore ba alima molona, leo ba tla tze ba ngore ba aja molona. Lefasi beli shumisha, ki ba tu ba ba few, ba ere ngore, hane ba tze, hane ba le tze re kana kowe. Ne ba dia ho re ba katele, runa ba mala omunswana. Ere habara katelezi, basanya ke ho re, ri tiyele re na kabore na. So I want to thank the democracy, ele ngore, ere loko loti ho re, le runari wile mato. Re kona ho re, ri te ri tiyele, ri pidishen. Kalifasi la wo runa, leo lebe le tiyeju, ba hulu ba runa, di roshi ja runa, le tiyeju, forefathers ba runa. Ba ele ngore ba be ba pila mo hulona. Baba tiela, baba tiela, le cho cho te te uwa nimba pila kajona, ba ipidisha kajona, di homu. Baba tiela mataka mo ka, baba filasi po ni. Ya re senzena bo forefathers ba runa, ba iti bala, baba ra ra ba iti bale, ba ho hula lefasi le. So gone are those days, I support the bill fully so. Thank you.
I am from Mandebele Alibilo. And I want to support this bill because we need more consultation for us to get land. We are not going to go back because during the apartheid era, our forefathers were robbed of land when mirrors, knives, axe were used to buy land. I would like to add more on the committee to keep on consulting, make more consultations with the people. So that we understand how the law is going to work with this bill. We are sick and tired of claiming in one place when we have got enough land to 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 live. In short, all what we're saying, we are supporting the bill, but do more consultations. Thank you.
Thank you to all those that raised their hands. Si atogo zanga boboke la bobe ba paga misa izanla. Eh can you please go back to your place, Budi?
Beswa wa uki uwele la uwe la kona fa.
Thank you, we were in this row.
Besigilili llanla, serake la pambiili.
Eh number one, you move immediately, appoint you.
Navakete tu komba, wa tolisika, oze ngapambi liunge okthoma. Ngeves bili.
Number three.
Ngeves tatu.
Please wait in the chamber.
Swawa ulinde lapo weslalwe.
And then this row.
Besegoba li llanla ilan de la.
Number four, number five, yes. Okay, number six, yes.
Ngeves tanda tu.
Number seven.
Ngeves komba.
Seven, eight.
Ngeves komba, o womanane.
Nine.
Ngeves toba.
Ten.
Ngeves chun.
Then we 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 will come back and finish this row because there are other hands.
Si rakele pambi nokete lela masanla se lego, wesan lebesi paga milego.
All those that came in when we have started, we are true with this side. So if you would like to speak and you came in later, please move to those chairs that are on this side.
Boke la baba sandukfika, namka ba fige ses tomi, le si kretile ba oka masanla.
Please don't sit in the chair that someone was sitting in, go to the other side.
Swawa nienga le shangotini, ebe nka kala la ba, nka kala li, en salone zukona parata, ebe zklzwe ngabantu, ebe ba la ngapambi.
Siabulisakuma roshi. Konda besita. And we welcome them in this meeting.
Siya namoge la, siya olochisa makos, siya wonda besita, besiya ba moge la, emlanganwe lo.
Three minutes, you state your name. You state whether you support or oppose the bill and the reasons thereof.
Ozo kwanemzo zemtato, nikelwayo na, shanganana ozo kuchoi biso lakho. Besewe achokuti, ue isegela namka ue ikalela na i bill namka omtetu omlingwalu. Ucho na mabanga wa loko, ozo kuluma.
Eh eh what you have done in other areas, the the representative from traditional councils eh we give them their own time. So eh. So eh, sizo, niniga your chance to speak. Once we are through with the last row, then we'll give the, the, the amahoshi eh, and the representative from the royal council their chance. So we were in this row eh. So we need one more from this row. If Ubaba is representing the traditional council, eh, we would like him, we'll give him the chance. Eh, please assist us with, with Ubaba, the last one. Is he not representing the traditional council? Can you please just check? Okay, can, can we have another one? No, we, we're moving from this row, we're coming to that row. Baba is representing the traditional council? We, we'll need someone, Baba. Yes, we, we are in that row. Can we get two more? Yes. And another one? Yeah, thank you. And then, and then after this turn that we're going to deal with, we'll then invite amahoshi.
Ralocha. Wa bolela mo ki ana kekana. Wa kolo fatin la kuma jani Hamanskrall ada koshi si ke ikekan. Mo ki to, reki bolela ki to represent her community as a large, together with eh, the royal family as it is. I'm a member of the royal family, sorry to say that. Ki bolela ka ka bili eh. Ki mama harin kaseki ka isapota, ka isapota ki just, the reason ilohor. Ki bolela ka the reflection of the truth of what is happening mo le fatin la reina. Ki kale reyemeti lefati la reina or libwelemraho. Kahonel fati la reina, asile fati la ke kanale nochi. Lefati le, ki lefati le le regilu enka nineteen sixteen. Le reka ki mahoshi, ibilele reka ki se chaba sa ikeka. Ri bolela iri divisa, iri reki tribe. Ka na ko ilanere divisa roki tribe. Ka cheko, ai sa le tribe ba ibisa ki community. For me, community at large, ekano baba twa ba kilimabana. But more bolela ka lefati, lele regilu enka nineteen sixteen. La feto pato la ka nineteen twenty-four. So the government as it is eh. Yare na, na rebana horre yare feila, ki kale retama tila eh, lefati la bo reina le sa konu buela mora. Le sa konu buela korri. Horre manon datte ona limon, datte kobe ona bolela ka di title deed. Alright, because of we are still under hoshi, lefati la reina alina title deed. Leru karu oreka nju oru onya kandju ya bonto waireka, wa, 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 wa yaha, koli fati la reina. You still have an occupational right. I won't title deed because of the sense eh, lefati la reina listing, I won't title deed le sato reki, pu so yarene. Everybody we didela feela mona reinyarene because I won't control. Di naga di ate wa, ba di grape, arere reka na kanar. Maran, ndio ngolo ngolo to my opinion, re ra horre, itanti etameka protocol. Eh, ensi, le parlamenté ba refeli fati la reina, rekonohorre, lerena rekonu controla ba twa rena ba fe. Naga ka mo lao, esengor naga, eji we, omelo man atata potaya gare, reba fe tabare. Hoshi owa na kanar, hoshi aha na kanar. Ba tu ba idila la feela mo le fati la hoshi, ba tere lefati ba lepoliticize. So reina ka ba ka bu sita, beleharu politicize lefati, lefati ke la bo reina ke la bu datte mo gulu. Ra ba tu bera ka mo goluona, ra ba tu wa ka mo goluona, ra ba tadi gola ra ba ta fami. So reko pe la horre ba refeli fati la reina, reina, re le mahoshi, re na re di land ba yasilibus tenke naga. Retadula fasi ra zeboro, tanziri reenka lefasi la reina. Li wii, ha lo buela moto, loa buela se chaba, lo ba le trust ya se chaba, ki lebo.
I am Ana Keekana from Hamanskrall. I also represent the royal family. I, I can't say I'm supporting this bill, I'm just in between, because this land belongs to us. We bought land, or then it was called the tribe, or the tribal land, from nineteen sixteen to nineteen twenty-four. That the kobe spoke about the title deed. When you buy how a house or land today, you are giving what is called the occupational right, instead of owning that land, because land has been politicized. We are happy that you are following the protocol of giving us, giving us the land back. But there's a lot of lawlessness. People do what they like about this land. There's a lot of people who are not following protocol when they're supposed to give us land, because this land has been politicized. Thank you.
So we, we can't fight easily, those who believe in my anan. Si peni umshaba, siwa asu wenza lukisikfuna injengens, si funu kala ma business. Asuwa asu kala ma business. Ba kme lu kala business, me lu kipe three point five your renta indao, kusi business la kuli be successful. So si, si na injenge government, injenge parlamente, injanga ma ona, ma ona rebelu tuetu namshange, nime pamuetu. Si ankeela kuti umshaba, a ube ewetu incha, wati ti ne skula, ne kulme nga, ne skatse ne sinjulile. Ngaswa ksa sa ba ti so hambe. So iti incha umshaba ubusoa iti wa manje, iti ksa sa. Iti ama leader wa ksa sa. Iti so lukusan umshaba ksa sa nobe, ni ye ko, si peni incha ti su occupy as it is. So that's what I want.
My name is, my name is Jabum Gomenzulu from Nkangala. I'm not here to speak about land, because this land belongs to the Koi San. I'm here to talk about Nkangala. At Nkangala, there's a lot of land which is not occupied. And as a youth, we want that land. We, we don't want to live with our parents as we are doing now, and we don't want to go out and rent. We don't want to build shacks as well. The government has a lot of unoccupied land, and we want that land. We mustn't only take land from the wild people, we also want land from the governments. In Nkangala where we grew up, there's a lot of youth that is unemployed. There are no malls, there are no investors that are interested in, in, um, in building at Nkangala. We don't even have title deeds. Just give us the land. We want to start businesses, but we don't have money. Uh, we have to pay three point five if you want to have a place to go and start a business at Nkangala. You as a parliament have grown up. It's going to be our time now as a youth. We are the future leaders. So please give us land as the youth. Thank you.
Greetings, my name is Nicholas Muthaw from Ritabizeng. My name is Nicholas Muthaw from Ritabizeng. I'm here to support the bill, uh, mainly because of the two reasons. First, it took the nineteen thirteen Native Land Act for us to be dispossessed of this land. And it was a piece of legislation that dispossessed us. And it's gonna take a piece of legislation like this one to give us back our rightful land. We've been foiling us in this land for quite a long time now. Half of this population now doesn't have title deeds. You will find the only people in this house that own a title deeds, it's only the minority that are busy defending or against the bill. We are sick and tired of being foiling us in our own land. Thank you.
Ere ke lebo eh mutula stilo. Eh, wa bolela mo libiso ki Jonathan, sifani ki Baloi. Eh, Wat Council, Wat Seventy-Six in Hamanskrall. Kitala ku majani, ku harre kekan, ku si kekan. Eh, re program director eh lebo eh. Eh, reska ka bolela kalileme lasi jatla, ki yo lemeleli ti lengaskepi mona reinyarene. Lona lemeleli ti ringnaha, yo na ere bolela ngai yo na kaje. Eh, roa fe zongo bolela mu, utwere le nanolele nulava li vita nineteen thirteen Land Act. Ere bolebele horre, reposea that Land Act wat inzele eh. Ki nu ingwezi feela mo la kuto noiba. Eh, reposea was piece of segregation legislation passed by the Union Parliament. The act decrees that natives were not allowed to own land. Utwe bilan ba ri nyenyefatabe, ambari vitadi native. We were not people, we were native. Eh, you just imagine, uka ba tu bani na mu, you just came and you called them native. Aru onohore, how, how was the land seized? How? Ore le na, le, le, lona le fati le bolela ngai lona le zoro yang. But it was eh, 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 the land was seized. If you open your dictionary today now, utwere di fon di bilan dictionary, if you open a dictionary, you check the word seized. Eh, she'll tell you matomala, ito buza matomala pe. Error, it was forcefully taken. It was taken by force. There was no consultation. There was no people who were sitting together here, ba, 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 ba ringgi di native, sitting down there asking, wo re, can we have this piece of land? But today, ma burba eh ma moka cheko, ba ni ko robolela pele ba robo tore, ba re, robolela ka di mortgage. Di chelte tar nogodi banken diira eh. Ma on this land, there were people. Munolo fata bolela ma, the land was seized from the Koi Koi. Error, there were people living in this land. Today, black people are, we are poor today as black people, because we don't own anything. Pa, pa, pa holo war na bo, ba te baba boleti ngemo, koba tha ngote, ngheba ka ugo ta feela, horre nte ba lema. Eh, nte ba tiya di tati, kono ke. But today, di no ka, di tole tu, di kampet tu, ma tamo akampet tu, eh, a ona ke motu. Waterfall, uka si, you can't go to the waterfall, eh, natural resources, sorry, na tosote, eh, di kampet tu.
...mara aguna njo ba yenza ayu. Bapi izi ba chenchaa abo meya ra icha ni every year. Asas guchikwenza galani. Aguna service delivery reyenza ala relekaya. Aguna next guchulili. Since EDA i ngenile guma spala sisokola wes. Indela smoshegiile aguna ntwie hamba gaale. So sitige wena mbozo we D A i sipeswa ku. Niabo.
My name is Caroline Taledi from Inkangala. I come from Senko and the party I am from is the ANC, which is the People's Organization that does not discriminate. I am here to support this bill because the land belongs to us, black people. White people came and they took the land from our ancestors by just offering them mirrors. We know what happened and now we are here saying that we want our land back. We shouldn't struggle while we have land and while white people are there in big farms with their pigs and we, black people, do not have land. We should take it away and they can come and live with us if they want to. This bill is helping us by providing a direction. Land should be returned to the people. Here we are drinking dirty water that D A is not offering proper services to us. The municipality is failing. Instead, they just keep on changing mayors each year. So, D A, we are watching you and we need this land to be returned to the people. Thank you.
First thing first, as black people who have suffered more than enough concerning this issue of the land. We've got a total number. Yabando bangalafundi abapume skolueni bakishua ngekan bakakishua mapuru. Guti bangay skolueni bago bereki na. Mara na wanga itali ndaba lewe naha. Guti naha leyo gubane beka benefit angale soskat. Bakishu skolueni guti boko bereke nache. Utaale nohun gale soskat. Guti jongo babapuma balisi skolo ngendaba bashoba pisinge nache. Gubano benefita wana mshangi. Babo okela bangala bazanga bafund giibo la babasuela matu bombereko. Mara basa konugwia glenaha beba berekeela. Guti bakonukto la matu bombereko. Masia ba wutu ayiko enyindo gapande wutu. Gupasiswe isetin twenty five for expropriation of land without compensation. Leona asnange nyindelan. Agnega sabu yele muva siapa mbilwaya way. Siya guskatso gutu majya sensei ni. Si fese infiso zabo Stephen Bantupiko zabo Solomon Mashangu zabo Tolsi September. Zabo Hector Peterson boongela bangta baafa ba fele. Guti sitola malungelo roka pele. Inaha ingenyenye lungelil kulu medesilitoli sischabe since him. Ogwe swili ngiyaktembi sa gutu wakamba roki South Africa lut drive around. Utaale in naha ukone naha ozozozobiza ngama white elephant. Siya guti white elephant inaha engenzwe engenzwa giyo next. Mara ngizwe nyitleva plaxla inchela ngunda ba ye ekonomi. Guti noh, we can't take the land because ekonomi will suffer. Isafa gupi ekonomi ngenda wengenzwe next ekona maragwenzwa next giyo. What ekonomi mbozo safaranja ekonomi gungenzwe ki next boona laku. Leenda wale onawe beka utoto mni gas ba tushala e Tech, shale London, shala Australia, tushala gupi. It's a white elephant place but we can't use it as black people. It's owned by a white guy who's not even staying in it. Ogwe startu, I was very disappointed one time. Kimamele yama discussion was the parliament. Ngizwa mshoni isha umusu alukota shalange sizu. Ati amanyamakuwa inaha itenga. Gwaba nzi magimutu ngimbuzo. Guti ba itenga gubani ba itenga malini ba itenga gwi ipisho. Boba makua sugala sugakona atolumdonzi mala. Utenga njani utenga bani njani figa. Unenyongo ma elda wangu gomama uifonchaka chaka. Et who's that man calling me stranger in my land, my mother's land? Wesigiswe wogunye. Okay, patangega sabu yele muva. Obukumpa nange munenge sasneta. But ANC has failed us in this issue of land. Gwaba ninety-four when we get to that majority. We were supposed to take to change this bill to expropriate then gale soskat. And again in nineteen ninety nine utabombe when also get to that majority. We were supposed to amend this bill. Guba si ekonomi mshangi laskulu. Gube skulu wugunye mshangi. But we can't point fingers.
Your turn is up. Your turn is up.
I'm Kuluma Shangu, an ordinary ANC member. We are here to support this bill because our people, we believe, have suffered enough. We have a situation in this country where we have a lot of uneducated people who are taken out of school by white people to go and work the land. But the question remains as to who they are working off the land was benefiting. And the answer to that is that they are working off the land was benefiting the very same white people who took them off the land. So we are here to fight for the land so that the aspirations of our former freedom fighters like Solomon Mashangu can be realized. If you were to drive around in South Africa, you will find that there are vast tracts of land which, when you inquire about, you are told that it's owned by so and so. And when you ask as to where is that so and so, they'll tell you that that person is living overseas. Now, we believe that that kind of a situation should be changed so that the people can have equal access to the land. One time I was listening to the parliamentary proceedings and I got very sad when I heard the honorable leader of COB, Honorable Museo Ali Gota, telling parliament and the people of South Africa untruths. During those proceedings, he claimed that white people bought this land. Now, my question is if he claims or he says that white people bought this land, from who did they buy it? Because we know as to how they got it. Now, some of our problems are compounded by the very same ANC. Because at one time, the ANC had a two-thirds majority in parliament. But the ANC never used that two-thirds majority to change the situation of our people. So now we are here to support this bill and we hope that there'll be something positive will come out of this. Thank you.
Lochaninoke ikamalamngenma mizamunguni umshaluwa se Bronco Sprite. Nge ibona yipili palio angas guti palulewe bapi. Ngoguba emi nimthetewa palue la nemakiwa konela e Bronco rekonana. Siya tlukumezeke maplasin. Stosa ngolu. Mndakje lukutingthengi ndawana wenge thengila ekintozoyenza. Ngayala ofunugi akona. Ofige wama spala rural development. Bakje lukuti anegas konunga ta hambi epiduri. Wunini sensea ama title deed. Kachila kachila tinabane maplasin amalungelo asinawa. Asaziwa. Gubebe esaziwa. Anja spete weto mapepa. Jongo mtu wonke onamalungelo oshale South Africa. Since South Africa is chigeli. But then, si ma first producer. Ogulda na ba funabeza git e Plasin. Ikomo ba ifunagi si fu ye pisngana yinda. Wille wute seso kfu yabando ana njani? Ayen yindo. Angazi nanama kvelimbereko ahweno se Plasin mabona ano. Yakwa ingeno ngiyathogo.
My name is Manes Zamgoni, a resident from Bronco Sprite. I can see the bill. I don't know what to say, but we struggle so much, we as black people, because somebody from somewhere will come and buy the land and tell you that, I even bought you, you are under me. I can tell you what to do and what not to do. And then we end up in the middle of nowhere, not knowing what to do. Because now we also need a place to stay. We went to rural development and they assisted us with nothing. And now, what I can say is that we do not have rights. This is what I can conclude from what I have saw. By the way, we are the first producers in this country. Those very people who took the land, when they want meat, they need to come to us. When they want products such as farm products, they come to us. But the question is, where do we have? We do not have the land to farm those products and to do the farming. So now, this entire bill, I believe, that is failing us. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. We agreed that we will then ask the royal council, the traditional council. We also welcome those that have recently joined us. We have been informed that there is the Kekeana Royal House amongst us. I have not been informed. Okay, ayu. The Somdei Traditional Council. The Royal Makirane. Sokulumi Traditional Council. Amandebele Balibelo Traditional Council.
Sina Amandebele Walibelo Traditional Council.
Sina ye u xoshi ndabezita ubaba Umkambi Mashangu esina ye. And he is with his chiefs. You are all welcome, bo ndabezita. We then going to allow you to speak. We giving you five minutes each. Then the one who is going to speak first, you can come to the mic.
Siathogo zampatu oshelo.
Thank you very much, chaplain.
Ocha me ngapambi ilingu cha Abumabona.
I am Chabu Mabona.
Omonye wama cancelare wetsoane oyi wipifuti kukance.
One of the whips from the council.
Gizela ngapambi ilinzokthogo za ipalamente kuluku tize la iketi e Bronco Sprite etsoane. Guti ge gubengiyo indao lakzo kulunyelo akon ndabaya yomshaba.
I'm here to thank the National Assembly for having chosen Bronco Sprite as a suitable place for this meeting.
Gitogo ze woka amakosi akona la uzubon guti ndabaya yomshaba. Gwi yindo eswenyakulu las ngabikona noptogo. Ingako amakosi apume woke atoswa ngundabezita Umkambi Mashangu.
And I would like to thank all the chieftenship that is available here, which signifies as to how emotive the land issue is.
Guli kniso guti gumiyake mnengi. Na disa kulasba ngani si zamenga oka manja. Lasbona konu kutumshaba utethwe ba bandu bebaliltise. Abando banzima bayachaka ba tlukumezeka. Sngazi no guti ge bona ba utenga gubano yomshaba. Siathogo za namshangi kale tuvesilitola. Guti ge e government of South Africa itkabange la makosi itkabange la bashali. Guti ge ndabaya yomshaba manje. Siya soskat isoguti buye ebandu inabanzima.
We would like to thank the government for having realized that land needs to be returned to the people, even though we acknowledge that it has taken so long.
Ang tate lilitu bage gingabishtren tablozi. Gi bize ndabezita ubaba Umkambi Mashangu ozokvulela woka amakosana. Guti ge ba bege kabansi. Guti ge ichokti negiibo bangamakosi ndabaya yomshaba. Goba bangta ba mashale maplasini basukumezegile. Abana ndazo klala gushie. Bafuna wutiba zinze klalege gushie. Abando batolu yomshaba glenda wo ye ketu.
I would like to give, because Umkambi Mashangu, an opportunity to open for all the chieftenship that is here because we know that our people need land and our people are very, very restless and they are in a dire situation in terms of land.
Siathogo ze. Lochaninoke abandi balapambuso siya lochisa. Okintata mishe zokona lapha siya lochisa. Ngimuma shangumkambi weswili. Endawi niyago sokulumi mko bola. Ngimumkambi weswili ge minage ngichukuchuki lomte tosho ngoswa agolona. Ogubise la indao ogubani gaz. Siya usapota ngiyasapota. Ngiatheba guchukuti namakosana lassebenana wa ngapaswa ami siya usapota lomteto. Utabanda banzima gweyinda ozabo mkulu. Njenge mandulu. Talamusla wavande wavamshava wetu. Lumshava lo ba tole abo mkulu balapa basusa abo mkulu wetu. Gesinynda wengejwa na mangwa ba wabo mkulu wetu. Guli nyewe la apu nasfunyo kpaasa asas guti spasha apina. Manje si guchukuti lomteto mauzu lenge ndabezso guchukuti ubambindo ezne. Asuwa si guchukuti nokalima ba ndu bambe na tinga. Apagnava ndeva shumeza ba ndeema plasin. Abando abona ba tuwyo koto la pa bayakula ba ndu abagnamteto paliwu. Ume ngamelma kapasiso lomteto nige la makosi la ma nde ndawenzo. Inga sa makosi pe la na ba ndu o nenda wenyaka kabene. Ne lungelil o guchutumshaba lo au au au. Manje ngithogo za kulunga lokosi siya usapota lomteto ten times. Amauzu liswe. Uma uma u. Ungunu na ku kulumila guchutlazino zozozochisa zokamba masnyan. Agubenja alo. Angunu kulma kuku tibe zemshabi gubenana indo ngimoshawu. Thank you. Ngathogo.
Thank you. I am the...
Okuluma olongo peta. Ikamba no baba. Oso kuluma Umkambi estha. Gitogo za kululendo siya isapota. Soke sipeswa. Siathogo. Woke.
Thank you. Greetings to all. I am Mashangu, the second leader. And I would like to say, we as traditional leaders, we support this bill. One reason is that people took the land from our forefathers. Now, when we want to do our rituals like ukacha, we can't even do that because some of our forefathers' graves were even done away with due to the this land expropriation without compensation. So now, in support to this, we'd like to plead with the government to go on with this bill because we support this bill. To go on with this bill and approve it so that we can claim or we can get our land back and continue our culture as normal. I won't speak that much. I would like to thank you very much for all of you being here. Thank you.
Siathogo ze. Jongo babesicho city. Nangi je ngipeta. Kapas goposi bakoso kulume. Ngichame ni. Gikulumela indo esongosa la. Si peswa yo makosi. Namalita namakosana woke eswa pete wu. Jova si zeno babetu la. Nkela guti nendo ezokulunyo ala. Asisapote ni gogo mteto ilize. Malibu ye. Asbu ye masiswe. Masize kaya. Si zene kaya si zo waka. Abando abatolemsebenas konu bereko. Ngathogo.
I am Pet. I am with my king, King Umkambi. We are here to support this process and we are saying, we hope that this process will bear fruit so that our children can get jobs. And we also request that everybody should be in support of this process. Thank you.
Bayete ndabezita. Bayete ndabezita Umkambi weswili. Toma ngichise ubabetu Umkambi weswili. Then ngichise umkinishtalo. Ngichise namakoswa woke. Ngichise nischava soke. Okuluma lapha ngundabezita waseka ngala wo Somdei. Ngithogo za kulu. Ucutin tole lilitu ba skamba no babetu ndabezita Umkambi. Ndjango ba tinasi makosi. Siya usapota lo lipili. Siya usapota hundred percent. Goba umshaba wetu si makosi. Watatwa awandebezkanila. So ba otata ngo sixteen fifty-two. Fiawa abo ekapa. So city umshaba abo kokovetu abo Somdei. Woka makoswe ketu. Awuyele evanruini. Abandu bakonu kutu batolu yomshaba. Konama nje scharva setu siya tlaka. Si shalimku kweni askonu guti stole izenzelu. Vilo sobawa no mbozo ANC. Guti asala guti wenzeli scharva setu izenzelu. Goba konama nje izenzelu. Since sa omteto ekangala guyataga. Ikese ikamba milana malang. Ma eswa wutu mbozo ANC ukono utoko medischava. Siya obawa getoni pokulu si makosi. Goba scharva lesi. Asischava sabo ischava sa makosi. Geti ba ete ndabezita.
Thank you. I am the second leader and I agree. I greet you all. I am Somdei from Ekangala. Yes, it's true, we support the bill. Since the land was taken from us by white people. So now, since we are limited and there's very little that we can do because of not having a land, yes, we really do support the bill. And we also like to ask ANC to take care of the people of Inkangala and the nation at large. Because now, since the land is not on us, we struggle a lot. Our childrens do not have work. There are so many things that are happening now and we really need to have this land back so that we can continue our rituals as usual. Thank you.
Okuluma ago. Nguputa. Indo tanaye princesi yagosokulumi. Ogotoa ngeshlanu ngi princesi napongizo kuluma nete ngani. Goba ngizwe u guti. Umbuso shezi pamputuno. Gumbuso omku. La sinekinga yoguti tina. La sisema plasin. Lapaga gushala konana abandro bamshope. Labo abandro bamshope azange bakambeni. Ba pataluwa imalizabo. Mara gune kameli cha elitibacho. Esinyin plasi zyan tatwa. So bengina e umesitemachala obuyale. Pesu lukuti ayunguzeli ndabale ipalame. Uti ngoba tina sili relama title deed. Guzanja lukutabanyo ebakochwe. Ngathogoza.
I am Uta from Sokulumi. We hear that you are from national government. And we have been told that in farms, some white people were paid off for their land. But rumor also has that land at the present moment is being appropriated. Thank you.
Oh, I am Mmo Kikeli Ozaya Swandle. Ki rumerise mapalamente arona. Ki rumerise lemagoshi arona. Alile Mmo. Ki twago Amandebele Balibelo Traditional Council. Retile Mmo retlo sapota bill. E ilengore revulela kaya onaka jiku. Mara honelidita ba ze ilengore neridi tswere. Re emezesichava. Kore kanete reathaga. Reathaga relisichava. Naga etereke bawuru. Enheba etaya ba etereka mbozo ola oruwisiteng. Kambozo apardeiti. Belene kitla gotalosa hori apardeiti e ira hori. Enhutli devangore everbona hori wise. Aparteiti e kemanju amaveidi. Apathi kikamu thuko hate ko thoya. Ki ona apardeiti e ilengore yarsogodisa. Mara batoba palamente nerere. Rela Amandebele Balibelo. Komushate kamufaswa xoshi Casey Kekeana. Honelle communal title deed ere twarezinge mbozo. Yanyaki wa title deed ore. Aywele kamushave. Le Mmu warena. Wanabalé harzuburu guti ralala inga ore. Honelidifeeme difemezeo harika mufase. Zebarinkewaveli. Harika mufase ra kontrol ya mushate warena. Mara fe la difemezeo di monare nyarena. So riakahore lele palamente lerthuse kamaba ka oswana le aw. Kitla emo mukialebo.
I am Caleb Josiasinobili. I'm from Hamanskrall and the king or chief Casey Keke. We are struggling because we don't have land. Maybe let me just try to explain the word apart hate. Apart means side. And hate means... Apart hate means, okay. Apart it means side and hate means hate in the true sense of hating. So we have a communal title deed with or which is lodged with the government. And we don't know what is happening with that title deed. Because in our own land, there are factories. There are businesses which have been built there. But we don't have control. But we don't have control or getting anything from those businesses. And we want to know what is going on with our communal title deed. So, we are pleading with the government to help us to regain our land.
Bayete. Bayete ndabesita. Yangsumano ngletisa be parlamente, ngletise amakosi waame abo Mkambi. Ngimispanyoni from Royal Manala Makirana Traditional Council, kapas gopkosu ufuna ba weswili. Indo oktoma, ngibonga iparlamente wo kozanga apa. Nocheka from sixteen sixty six, amakuwa be ba tola ma title ditit. And then, abandu wetu abatholi, busuka machainanga namapaasa azokto la ma title ditit. Amo official wetu akama spala, ba kocha, abandu wetu ma plasi nba chle banana amakuwa. Ve se babu ye bazokfaki nshobo sabo, benza imal bazokfaka enkhameni. And then sipshungo wuti, nalaba batlema wabanenge, se babupa, valele, solo balilela indo ganze, ma title ditit, bangapat guen kululewa. And then, kuti stola ma title ditit. And then, ngapandla wuti, ba donkrepe len, mara bawa nabakrepa male nditu. Indo yabo aipele. And then, from manje, abandu abanaja sisakalo, ba bubylele marupini, Tina njango gopkosisi ababusela, sinamalza namapawa, kuti smabusela kokokobabo. Lalaba ababa tutema plasini, ba ba kocha, kuti ngamba ma plasla o, kabandla na ba ba taka, sizo babusela, mbusutana, unga tani, gasko josinamalza city bayete ndabesita. Bayete mshate. Oneja sisakalo bubylele ma plasini, uzaktole inomboro za, mngazo ngza mbusela. Abana matuna lapa ngambusela. Abapa la, kutama kuwa bo upasha sia babusela, wo ka babuylele mshabe na kokokobabo. Ungatoli kutu mshaba ba tu, ona ngufanroyen, usala ovasi. Mara gnamu do sala la, ukipabano la, ukutaza okshobisa, nga mshaba kxingo okshobisa. Mshaba ngabo kokovetu bayete, namungpelela la, ndabesita.
Thank you. I greet you all, I greet the parliament and I greet the traditional leaders. I am Sibanyoni from the Royal Makanyana Traditional Council. From sixteen sixty six, white people were getting title deeds. Even Chinese, they do get title deeds when they come here in our country. But as for us, black people, we don't, we struggle to get such title deeds for our rightfully possessed land from us. So, we as chiefs and traditional leaders, we do return people to the sites, even if you come and tell us not to do that. We do grab the land. Why? Because we as traditional leaders, we also have powers to do such things with the land. So, since we have power, we'll return the people rightfully to where they belong. Even if you can find that you have your forefathers' graves somewhere, camp, we'll give them to you, we'll give that land to you because it belongs to you, it belongs to your forefathers. So, I won't be much, I would like to end there. Thank you.
Yalochisa no, kibumbuso. Amandebe lo, ye kere tuwa, kishtava sula. Mukha yachalo, mukha yachal banka. Abanda, ondabona ba la ba ti, ba cha kebo kendi. Asuso amakuenda inzabo. Naati, pati sina bena plasi. Kona manje, askrepe nganex, si furina ama plasa bileba di la banse. Tina si simu mmo, tiya singbanasi. Si babanuwe pasileli, nao. Namshane, ba kona ma wuti, abandataka, vanakeza, vana na wuti ya kuluka. Pati, umni ga zepla za gaga vo, muguti mduhtori kezi. Marusenda we na. Vanika loku yatogoza, oma ni zirela. Ni zo skarepa, ncharepa no sokulumi, sibambe sanisoka makosu. Nani? Ni skarepe. Puta ma plasa bile, kibana di la bannyama. Na diskulupila zenga wujie, yatogoza.
I am Hetcha and I would like to greet everyone in this hall. I come from Falbank. Our people are suffering in farms. Our people have no access to services. Our people have no access to electricity. And when they inquire or they want electricity, they are being told that by the owners of these farms, that you can't access electricity if I do not give you permission to do that. And we appeal to the government to give our people help in this regard. Thank you.
Angbonge lelituwa. Ngbonge iparlamente, ngibonga makose keetu woke, ngo kshugana shua. Ika malami na ngingu Lucas Mtimunye. Ongu secretary ngapas gopkosu, ba kasomte opete ngugawa sokulu. Gunestomba ngfunu kusavezala. Si inluenzima, silwen aparteitila. Sa itata sa ibegelali ekati, silwela i democracy. Nen kumbula gule, i icon islo golewa baloya. Watumtlaba lo belongs to people who live on it, ufuse si wucher. No, gunendo engmangaza wujie, just there. Umtlaba ononi Lego, no. Unga titi nguabandu abati. So, we have to fight against corruption. Ngikela, ni parlamente ni kalisi seleho. Goba gunabandu, asevatlemile innaxabo. But if sekfuse bazotole, sia guavanya bandu. Enhe gunestomba ngfunu kusavezala, gikulumela Ekangala. Ekangala lapa, we've got about four thousand stock, senkomi. Ukono mundo ngapila nenkomezinga ilokshin. Nitisisi zepingomez. Senzenjani. Abandu ba lima, se ba lima na, nalainga fuzi, se ba lima na se maso rich. I wish one day, wangatina kamba ni wenza ma risetla. Logu kunfesele, siyistomba, kuti abandu ba na ali kono. Why, why? Guli ndwe. Abandu bangatoli nacha. Last point, ngfunu kui vesa ngli. Utiwaya makose kretwa ya recognizer. We wrote so much letters a iti department, Enganayo, from Le Pezu. City stela slangani, si zo boni sana. We don't have a university Ekangala. And in the way established agade, in a land, he open, he vulegi. Siya shulega, nama investor, funu wenza, ama complex lapa, goba bandu alapa ba atoka. Astolimbe ndulu, in the way land. Please guys, speed up, yatogoza.
Thank you. I am Lucas Mtimunye, the secretary under Somtei royalty. I would like to paint few pictures for you. First of all, as black people, we belong to this country. It is as the former icon, which Nelson Mandela has said, that this country belongs to people who are the occupants of it. So, we need to fight corruption because now some people, they have this land unrightfully. Second picture that I want to paint for you is that some of the land has already been claimed. So, we need to speed up this process so that all people get their land back as soon as possible. The third picture is that here in Kangala, people have lots of livestock. But they do not have the place or the land to keep such livestock. So, please, help us so that we can claim this land back. And the last picture that I would like to paint for you is that, we wrote to various government departments and we don't have answers to our request of doing... We don't have answers to our request regarding the infrastructure. For example, people here in Ekangala, they don't have university, they don't have mall. And there are investors who want to invest. But where can they invest since the land is unoccupied? So, please, if you can help us speed up this, this will be much appreciated. Thank you.
Lochan. Uma kopoli. Uma kopoli, ngapas gosokulumi. Kimopetela eltobini. Wale ngichama nani, nen kama nani je. Si amangala kuti sogulu atotnini. Sizo gulu atotnini silwelu mshaba. Ava nbe ketu vachaaka. Vachaaka, Mara sati si puma upi, aparteitie. Mara nen kalewa, katiparteitikola i kulu. Sizo tlaka atotnini. Gufanela wuti nes tlaka o, siboni so kuti, sena ti, neskuluma namtsange. Xasa sfuelele, sizo kuluma iloa namtsange, kanisai kuluman. Askulmani ino sia fambi, sena kulmini sigo ba sia fani. Na ngizupshungo uvo ne ishtava, sia tlaki ishtava. Enhe si nchava, zililela gitaa. Ah, woman. Akisiti ni, neslangeneo, ni si kulumi indo ewonakala, si kulmeka ino. Sena i kulmini si wuyeleli. And then, ne wendwa, askonutu mbagaala. Xasa loka no kulumi indo, e, engabo, xasa uvuyelela, uvuyelela wujie. I pumeleli indo akonani. Agvene indo, i si komba wuti, le ipumelale na si. Ah, woman. Yatogo zo guza, guen ulabo. Ishtava silua naati, city Mara nipete, Mara nbonu kuti nenzani. Yatogoza guutunyali.
Greetings to you all. I am Akopoli under Sokulumi. And I'm responsible for Zitobeni. Our people are suffering. And during their suffering, they complain to us. Now, when we talk and when we meet, we are pleading with you that after everything has been done, let there be positive results so that we as leaders, as traditional leadership, can be trusted by our people. We can't be always holding talk shops with no result. So, let us talk, let us meet, discuss. But at the end of the day, let us have positive results because our people are complaining and they are complaining at us and they are complaining all the time. Thank you.
Lochan. Abram Boholo, Elantluv, kapas gosokulumi. Naminge abo ngantokoze, ne wembuseni na ba kona la, ke bazokwizo illiloza abandu. Na ti, sese ne lilo esnengi, ezofana ne zavula ba bandu. Enesli la ngendro iye aguluki. Mara, yweli si azoktozo, nan kona na, genascharepa, sharepe, yatogoza.
Thank you. I am Abram Boholo from Elantluv. I would like to thank everyone who is here, the government. And please, if you can help us to resolve these issues of the complaints that we have, we can highly appreciate that. Thank you.
Yala boha. Wawalela mogisnebi, Tovakale, in the office of gosikesi kekan of Amandebe lebalebe lo traditional council. Let me start by apologizing on his behalf. He didn't, he's not well today, so I had to come and represent him here. Let me start by greeting parliamentarians and the... Amakosu wetu predominantly and all protocol observed. Basically, we support this bill, however, with a very serious condition. We are the Ndebele nation, which emanated from Lethani and settled in Valman. From there, we were advised to buy a portion of land called Leokral 396. Our forefathers started paying for that piece of land from eighteen ninety eight up until our title deed was issued in nineteen sixteen, which is T775/1916. And secondly, we bought as well...
Sorry Papa, kihopela u shleje that plot number?
A title deed number.
A title deed number?
Yes, the plot number is Leokral 396.
Yes.
Yes, original. Now, it has been changed to Leokral 92JR because the powers that be during the older parted areas, they wanted to desecrate it and apportion themselves certain land parcels within the bigger area that was bought by our forefathers. We also bought even the other one called Dwefontin, now 275. Now it's called Dwefontin 94JR. Our biggest cry, this is an emotive issue to us. Ever since our title deed, it's still held in trust. We're told right from the onset it was held in trust by the Minister of Native Affairs, Louis Porter. And then came the new dispensation up to date, twenty-four, twenty-six years down the line. We still have no title deed in our hands. And the issue with it, we were forced in nineteen ninety-five to claim that piece of land, our land. But quite surprising, we have not been removed from it. We are sitting, we are still staying on that piece of land. Yet, we were forced to claim for it. And even up to date, the claim has not been settled. Three researchers, consultants, yes, were commissioned. They came to the same conclusion that the land belongs to Amandebele, to the Ndebele nation, which initially was called as an entity Amandebele, Amandebele. Then thereafter, Mangope as well proclaimed certain sections of our land for his own nefarious intentions. There's a portion called Portion 9, where the Babelik industrial complex is situated. He did that to tell you that a piece of land, the lease thereof was signed by BIC and our own forefathers in nineteen ninety, in nineteen sixty-eight. At an amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty rand per annum, with an escalation of seven percent. Yet, up to date, we have not even received a cent. There are so many, we are so highly indebted by governments which came into power. Our biggest concern, in twenty fifteen, the city of Tuan, we arrived up to Rule 5. There are several stages in the claim. Rule 5 is the final one. They were supposed, it was only the only remaining input that they were supposed to make, right before twenty fifteen itself. But we pursued that one very strongly under the leadership of the then mayor. the leadership of the then mayor, Ramukhopa. It required him and the municipal manager to just make that input, then we could have, our claim could have been awarded to us, it could have been settled. It only required nothing else but in their input to say, yes, we are prepared, we are ready, we'll offer services. As we know, it's a third tier state with its sole purpose to offer services to our communities. Up to now, we are fighting twenty-four seven. Our area is so cramped, we are now fighting amongst ourselves. Within even our jurisdiction, there's been a mushrooming of even bogus chiefs, who everybody claims to be a chief, they extract money from our communities, from our poor, gallible, vulnerable communities to say, okay, we will provide title deeds for you, we will provide services for you. They keep on lying to our communities to an extent that finally, our people, they come to Mushadi, to the royal house, very angry, thinking we from the royal house, we are doing nothing about their cause, we cannot provide much needed water, much needed electricity, even sanitation because of the title deed, because of the claim that is still withheld by our government that we love so much. Now, we think with this expropriation bill, we expect truly our government to do the honorable thing and effect it and so that we can have our land back to our communities who have actually used their hard labor, including flock of, you know, livestock to buy this land. We are actually very emotional and angry about this. With that, I would step back and not waste any time, probably because we have made several submissions, even to parliament itself, we have made several submissions, even to local government itself, to provincial government itself, we are actually at the epicenter of four provinces. And within us, right from Putazwana, the title deed, actually the ownership as well for the factories thereof, they used to tell us, okay, it's in the hands of Northwest. Northwest would houting yet it's administering and managing businesses within our jurisdiction, which is Babelik. And then there'd be a tug of war between houting government as well as Northwest government. That fight has been going on for years and years. We have got investors who want to resuscitate and revitalize those factories so that our people can have much needed jobs. During the past era, it used to employ over twenty-five thousand people, but if I can tell you now, it's running at thirty percent occupancy rate. You can imagine how many households really are done such a very terrible blow. There is no work, joblessness is rife, the proliferation of drugs and substance abuse. We are unable to control the situation because our government is holding us at ransom in actual fact regarding this. So we are requesting you, our government, to do the best and bring back what belongs to our people. Thank you.
Seabong, Gogo. Seabong.
Che, may I just say, he's a representative of Mandebele Akekana from Moleclani. Thank you.
Thank you. Siabonga Mahoshi, siabonga bonda bezita. We taking all that you are saying to us from the last speaker, if they have any written documents, we would gladly take them to the relevant portfolio committee.
Siskuzile woke enikchilero, eskulumi nlesisoktrina, the city, nayegutupete umtjolo. Umtjolola otate awlete ngapambili sizo otata surul selle komiti nefanele.
We really appreciate that we have graced our meeting today.
Stokozakulu kuti nokenje, nize nizo kambe la omshanga noitu namshanjie.
We really respect your presence here.
Begotu sishonipa ubukona be inu lapa namshanjie.
Just to remind the audience...
Standa uunkumboza.
That our chiefs and kings fought for this land.
Ogovana Amakosi wetu, ailue alalina.
Many wars were fought amongst black people and the white people.
Guavanezipi ez nengi, ez waluwago, fakati guabanzi manabamshopi.
And those wars were led by our kings and chiefs.
Begotu izipi lezo, kabes doswa pambili Amakosi wetu.
And as black people, we will always respect our chiefs.
Begotu njenga bandabanzi masizo chale swashonipa Amakosi weketu.
Thank you. We are coming now to this row.
Manja siza ngale, ereni loktrina.
Which one? Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Number one at the back? Number one at the back, yes. Even this row, oh, we start there, okay. Imaga, you are not number one, you are not number one. Okay, number one, yes. Number two, yeah. You come forward when you have been pointed to? Okay, then number three, yes. Number four? Number five? Number six? Number seven? Number eight? Number eleven, please also mark him. Move this side, move this side. Number twelve is the last one, the red, the red T-shirt. Just bring in your chair, just stay in the back, yeah. That is the last group that we are taking today.
My name is Wusmaposa from Bosmanskrall, gimshaloala Eprongosprey. So standu uwo ngai palame no, uvosfahachele namshanjie na. So obtina, genzilespona ngayo, lintuleenza galala. Lakmagsama elekshini, shala, shlagwenze yagais ndozi ngalizi. Agna uifoua atindweyenza galao, padmina indweyungfu nugu yaazuti, itshwane yaazuti nama plaza na. Siregnais depezu na. Itshwane yaazuti inama plaza na because of wainchonjalo, impumalanga, baxalwas impumalanga, paneki is. So padlatina la itshwane la agonzale next. From mina la, shlaglangala koni, family am, almost ilanda two hundred lap, plaza in lap. Amatunaseka ala pagilila plaza in eight twenty-six, asinda wene, asinda wene, ewan. Kune kampani afiya ala, patina manja sashukumezi, enesabi khotona wu. From last year, man singla ni twes, ngamba, ngamba sanana abikhot. Ngilewaru lolitivolopmeni, isizo angilto luru lolitivolopmeni. Epalame na yegelujalanga ati, kena vastati seriasina baxalwoma plaza. But especially dina itshwane si wes, si kumese yega, na ti indweyenza galao. So stalala lintuleze slako, nklanngalala inga ati, asapli, sentela, asapli.
I'm from an area called Bosmanskrall. We are really suffering, and I would like just to raise a question and ask as to whether does Tzwan know that they own or they have farms under their jurisdiction? On our farm where I live with my family, we have grave, a family graveyard there, and there is a company that is busy terrorizing us there. So when these kinds of meetings usually happen, what pains us is that you will find that after the meeting, nothing ever happens. So we are pleading with you as parliamentarians not to toy with us or to toy with our emotions. When you have meetings with us, please let us see progress because on farms, we are really suffering. Thank you.
Luchoane, o jamela pa, gubamu chianna, kitramuka eskotinsashe Elantluu. Ngaku lela Elantluu, ngaku lela Elantluu, ngabeletu Elantluu, nineteen fifty-seven against sixteen Zaramaye, misala Eplasi, bankika ngase move abad, we ozose. Kiwenzile loko, ugovernment, ubena machansi amanenge, ukujuji atati ama plaza, awabuiseli abantu nabamnyama. Ugovernment ujalanga, bantu abamnyama. From nineteen seventy-six, ugovernment ulo utisenza isibwile ekaya, leso sibwile kaya asipumeleli. Nanamshanjiesu government na ustabuya lanamange, usakulma ujuji ama plaza, magabuyele, evantu inabanzima. Ama plaza, uksuga, uksuga la epronoro, ukyanga impumalanga. La ama plaza beka wela impumalanga. Manja sojilu ugovernment, we turn around in dab, usawitima manja iti city of Tzwan. Manja naidi city of Tzwan, wada patu ngati ebese sitemile, sifetee i dedicate, leso dedicate, leso sia pi, waba besia impumalanga. Manja kosasbu ya food so applya, bushana, ugovernment magalisu uwezi ukorapchini, alze imali, yabantu wase South Africa, go kuti ama plaza abuyele, bantu nabamnyama. Magayegalele oto government, aga government agakulme ikuniso, kuti lento lefanele ikulume ikuniso, likona ikuniso. Uma uma ama, asuga ashtwale, uma ari liza umtwanalo, umtwanalo yone, une citizenya la, eh, South Africa. Ugovernment la ama plaza la yo, agakuluma utijana, le plaza nikile, kiknigile le plaza is seventy-six, oma le plaza infulunga is seventy-six, magashwa tijana, angilu nawe, step down, ungen unfowen. Siswaneni la. Waba konama ngaje tuwa ama plaza, mutu atle, utlemile plaza, upetee isti, nukazi citizenya, yale o plaza leyo. Uma wena uju ufunale o plaza leyo, uputu ahabala pe plasin, se wenziuwaini, se wenziuwaini springbok. Uyagutato isbunu, gutato umu, umu doxalela glalo plaza leyo, atati ispamo, awezu ispringbok. Atobule, atibem tobulifene, le elabeni ne, kotwa unwa la South Africa. Angajalema tu government, angajalema tu. Magabuya nama kuni so, amagabuya nektona nama kuni so, kwanama ngaje bakuluma, batine ANC kona lapo, na i ANC kona lapo, is a corrupty. Ikuwale i korapchini, lapo gla yonda olayo. Mama kikala i plaza ndampa ama, bayabuya bo na manje, seba okanesene nani, lo government na mapo isao kona, leso sikhotlaga dilezo. Bayasu ka ndampa ama, bayawezu okanesini, ya polistechini, ga yene no, no party, we, we, we.
I am Gianna from Elantluu. I was born in nineteen fifty-seven sixteen May. I suffered a lot as a young boy. I was asked to milk the cow by force. The government is corrupt and is toying with black people because now the government is saying one thing today and then other thing the next day. From Bronkosprey to Mpumalanga, this land belongs to black people. Now the government to try and confuse us. Today Bronkosprey falls under Mpumalanga, tomorrow, today Bronkosprey falls under Mpumalanga, tomorrow is the city of Tzwan, so that there can be a confusion as to when people want to claim back the land, they can't be able to do so in a proper manner. For example, a child gains a citizenship when he is born, he or she is born in a particular place or a country, but here with us, black people, we don't have the land, so as the citizens of this place, we say we need this land that is belonging to us. Black people are now being treated like animals. For example, a person can be shot and when one is being asked, what were you doing? You will hear replies like, no, I saw a monkey, I was shooting a monkey. That, things like that should stop. We plead with the government to continue this bill and the progress should be made. Thank you.
Melan, yai menpele galina, kina Rosemary Maylan. Lamato mo, kuhobela, thompa kifi, barah, Mahoshi arena, realy boha. Le parlamentari, realy ba, realy ribijemara, I can believe, lihono le, resai ema peleha, da minori, tridoba kuhobela ali fas, labota tabor na mohol. Agurol, libile kaneto, resati lemo, resato kuhobela, rupu ikuna maka maton, ruto kuhobela ali fas, la our forefathers, our motherland, ki supporta bilaya, land expropriation bill without compensation. Kena bota temoholo arina, kuhobela, tata temoholo out, jaulala ali fas, agisabala kana sixteen fifty-two, kibulala kaya, na isekibikiboni, tata temoholo akaba mufile jas, and then, bana ilwale boha, naba show, waba filedi plaza. So luhonri kilo rito kuhobela rito, we're coming to beg, hurtler ya kuhobela, awa ali fas, kela arina, re supporta bilaya, bata ali fas, la bora na moholu beg.
My name is Rosemary Maylan. Greetings to the public, our chiefs, and the parliament at large. We cannot go on asking and begging to be given what belongs to us. This is our land, therefore, we need to take it. Secondly, my grandfather went and fought in the World War. What did he get? Just a very heavy black coat, nothing else. While others were getting farms, white, while, while, white people were getting farms, were getting property. It's high time that we should take this land back to us. Thank you.
Good day, parliamentarians. I'd like to honor our chiefs, our kings and their supporters, the sound engineers as well. I want to greet you and the community at large. My name is Jacob Mudise. I'm from Hamanskrall, Suruman Ridge. And I'm here because I was born ANC initially, and I understand the reason why ANC was formed is because we had chiefs then. ANC was formed by our chiefs, was formed by our kings. And I hear a lot of ways that ANC is very corrupt in terms of the land. See, ANC is just an organization, and organization is just a name, and I don't want to entertain the petty, the petty politics. I just, I just want to say one thing, between black and white, there is a difference. I can be black with the skin, but I can have a white heart. And a white man or a white person can be white outside but can have a black heart. So what is the difference there? I don't want to entertain...
I don't want to entertain black and white. But I want to say, those who stole our land, they must bring back our land, simple as it is. And I support this bill at its current state as is. This bill is giving us the right to get our land back. And there's nothing wrong with this bill. Expropriation without compensation is a bone of contention. So I don't understand who has a problem when somebody has to receive what belongs to him or her. The Bible states that, "Give to Caesar what belongs to Caesar and give God what belongs to God." And in this case, Caesars are black people whom their land have been stolen from them. So give back what belongs to Caesar. That's simple as that. After all, it is a community land. It belongs to the people who live in it. But at the end of the day, some people, they just got it as free. So let expropriation take place. Amandla!
Even if lo ona mo di minister. Minister wa agricology. Ekuwa tuwa budget. Ya guwa riki agricology. Ya ze wa iflashe wa lema o tu. Kurikichalete ya ba tuva barile. Reberere egane te garma. Ho she arna alwe zetu golu. Alwe zetu golu ya ba tuva barile mfele. Aparte iti ki enjoy ilo kuwa na 1994. Kuwa na kibwana aparte iti o kuol. Kofita e la ebe sa lande erbele. Because onu wale. Muto mu lo mu itigala mtai rataang ena au lewalela girna ba tuva banu. Muto ujuadi milionano xi ba tuva asokoala kamurwa ta la faz. Muto wa zia hafezo ujuachalete o omu mutenyamiku kugamol. Rojancha mo itlo na Mozambika itlo na Zimbabwe. Because of members of the ANC, they are selling the piece of land to the Zimbabwean and Mozambican. EFF is supporter motiono. Mara hoka ya wa teoka ka dongrugu ele. Kona le mikuku ya EFF ile kona lo office. Ba para uniform ya EFF. Ba reki ke kiskua ta kempesa EFF. Ba tuva ta di tere po ta ba regile di poro poro na ba regile di fele. Mara re re la faz eske la regisiho. Rea ka ekandika governmento wa di cho mi di wa ba wa fe me. Government wa re na onu wale. But a straight talk doesn't break any friendship. Arabu lele ne te mopela se chao. It's better than the whites. Kuwa na waleka mu koholinkati. Thank you, sir.
My name is Andrew Rawrock. I am from Mamilodi, East Ward, 97. It's very surprising that the very government which is saying we must fight for the land is the very government that is actually destroying the land. In the sense that there's a lot of sheks being built almost everywhere. The very people at the top are the ones who are encouraging building sheks on land that we should be using for something else. And it looks like the ANC have got special people because they have the money to deal with or to give to special people. Our own chiefs and kings have got no power because they've been, the power has been taken away from them by the very top people. There is also lawlessness. Everybody does what he thinks is right and is not right. Why were we fighting for freedom? We got freedom, but I think this freedom is even worse than the old apartheid system. Because we are not getting any help and anything from anybody. For example, EFF has got a place where they've got offices in their uniform and they are filling their pockets with monies that they get from the people who are getting sheks in that area. What are we going, what are we saying to ourselves? Thank you.
Okuluma go ngutwansko sana indawena se Placebo Fontaine Farm. JR558. Since I was living from rural development in Akedia Pretoria in Headfield since 2015, ang na way forward. So begone e mine e one be mineina la inklemekwana indawo la inkshala kona. Manje singa three miners, about seven zala po. They are blasting since inklemila kwenza Galilutu. I'm running to the councilors since I kwenza Galilutu. So ngale iwa iforwa to the parliament. Nkatelukso ka e Placebo Fontaine ki wile to the Pretoria Akedia. Ki tgele nense umesu kula po. Ngingenenda wene o uti, izi njuzia cracka zitu wene mine. They are trucks ehamba ago. They are transport eh transporta bantu la po. Pa tawantuwa la pe komuniti na wekwa ba seven zako e mine. So ngale parliamente jali nde imala po. Ki buye ngulumele go mu ye umlu ngokuwa na la po. Otengisa amanzi to the community. Ova lela bantu amanzi, utwangisa poza amanzi. Ba tata indawo akwa wa valama ke iti. Bantu pa tenganzi 250 rand ummuze kutu tengiwa amanzi. Karipota ta ting to the municipality. Pa tza ngobe ni iforwa la bantu pa sakipa imale again, even last month by keeping. Engi buye, gi kulumele, izi njuzasima plasiniz ota. Milangale kaya sakenge samende pa namata balupaka ngota njuzi wile nizi lugazi. Parliamente ngale ngitini sijeli, singa sabanbu meeting. Ax sanyo nipantin black and white. Ngobe ni iforwa tu kuti siyagopi. Ngoba maska lele go, intuwa za nikulumele sakti nasinta bantuwa. Fail. Ngoba ifuwa seka is 21 house. But baskwari li, baskwari li indawo, 300 meters square. Nkomo zetu sijala po. Si xera one chocho tank nengkomo. Si poza ingi ni, eskeleli nengkomo, ge chocho tank e one. Ngale parliamente jali nde ma e Placebo Fontaine. You can Google it, JR558. Uti kwenza galan ngali. Ayikinde vela go to the parliament efige langale ma plasinu wangabu. Jaa tuwa go.
My name... My name is John Scossana. I'm from Placebo Fontaine. We made a claim in 2015. And up to this far, there is no way forward about our claim. We are suffering there. At first, there was a mine on the farm. But now we have three mines that are on the farm. There is blasting every day and our houses are cracking. We have made peace with rural development and up to so far, we have gotten no assistance whatsoever. There is a white man there who is selling water to us. And we also have a problem of the land because we have cattle and other forms of livestock. But our area, our grazing area is very small for all of us. And we have taken all our pleas all this time to government. But up to so far, we have gotten no assistance whatsoever. So we are pleading with you as parliamentarians to please come to our rescue. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the parliament, members from different community. My name is J N Mugueno, Joanna Singitimugueno. I'm representing workers, occupiers, tenants, dwellers, labor tenants in this country. I am a leader of What's Forum. As I've explained, all these type of cases, we registered and we got evidence that indeed this bill must be looked into. And then we then support that changes must be made. We are talking from experience. Day by day, we are on the ground across the country. All those who complain about government, it is about the incompetency of government when they possess land. But that can change, but that cannot stop the bill to be changed. But the incompetency can be addressed. That is misconduct. If there's corruption, the justice class must wake up. We can deal with justice class, deal with corruption. But the changes of this country need to be looked into. The reason I'm saying this on behalf of What's Forum, this is what we have sit down and what we have looked into through inspection, through going to place by place. We have seen that there must be a change. We are non-sexist. We are not even contesting power. We are not contesting power in this country. But ours is to assist the people on the ground, both white and black. When they are in dispute over the issue of land, we bring solution all the time. We even call rural development. Sometimes we fight with them. None of them does not do the relevant things that they supposed to do. We are always assisting them. You can look into this area, region Tzwanu. They are using only two, three people to address the complaints of the whole community. And that is insufficient. They need to be assisted. They need to appoint more, more, more warm bodies to can look into such cases. The case that was reported here, it is evidence that we have so many cases of this nature in our legal office here in Bronkospray. We are here in Bronkospray, our legal offices, What's Forum. We've got more and more cases of this nature. Therefore now, we are not in support of this because of the color. It's because of inequality in this country. If you look into the needs of this country, there is a need for addressing inequality. There are 70...
Nali bitola ka ketuwa fatwa ma la faz. Ke tuwa ro, mokasho, waba dimu, limu dimu, ilo African National Congress. By lenkuro barbona, they are not supporting this bill. It's because they know or by relay. It's only thugs that can do that. They've stolen the land that belongs to majority. And today, they want to come here. But oru wazaka willing buyer, willing seller. It failed. But ba tuva la mobili because they are rented crowds from other political parties that I'm ashamed to name them. At the section 25 of the constitution, the constitution is a supreme court of our country. Section 25 of the constitution call upon the parliament to enact as much, as a matter of must, the law of general application to enable expropriation of land, land distribution. I'm saying this because people come here and they come and lambast the African National Congress, forgetting that if there's a house that must be able to address this issue is the parliament. They are part of that parliament, but they want to come here and claim as if the African National Congress have failed people of South Africa. It is not the African National Congress that failed, the South Africans. But they are those within the parliament that they are protecting the market value of their property that they've stolen from our grandfathers. So regularly African National Congress, we are not going to speak better English, rebel aleka willing buyer, willing seller. We are saying this bill as a matter of urgency. It needs to be approved so that regria land they are in a back. And I want people to go and check the 54th African National Congress resolution on land expropriation. It's very clear. It's not going to break the issue of food security. Because people come here, ba tuwa intimidate abato to say ilo ta 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 food security will be violated. It is go and read that document. It says, "The land, herds of land, we must make sure hori a food security ever protected." And as African National Congress, we care about our people. Majority of people buy labor, but seller dignity abona. I mean, you cannot...
Greetings, everyone. I'm Elvis Malimela, worried resident of the farms. I'm representing the farm resident. We want to make it very clear that we are supporting this bill. The South African Bill of Rights states that every person has the right to shelter. And then in order for that right to be existent, we need the land. We cannot have shelter without the land. If you can look in the townships, our government is trying their utmost best to provide people with the shelter. But then they cannot. They build RTPs there and then a person builds a shek next to the RTP. All because there's not enough land. Our people are not catered land. So we want to make it very clear that we support this land. We know who are the rightful owners of this land. And we would be ruled by the minority. The white monopoly capital must return back the land peacefully. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, sanbona. Eh, kamalamgo Moshe Magi ngifela e ma plasin ne, Fofa, plot 89. I think a lot has been said and I think it's only about time o guti lebile implementwe. Asasafunugu zumundazoschela guti asi funu guti implementwe. This is about our land which was taken. You can never want to take something back that does not belong to you. Even way before they came here, whoever said the land is theirs. It was never theirs in the first place. O guti njeva tsugba shang enyondo, pasnigasindu bezungas understand. But now, we are saying the land should go back to the rightful owners. I've got a problem as, as a young man who shalla ma plasin, engilo almost every second day. Namapunafunu kipa abantu e ma plasin. I am tired of that. It's going to stop as in today and next week, if it comes to a point, this should be implemented. Abantu asema plasin also now they should have a land that belongs to them. As they eat it, it is theirs as now. So now, I am saying to everyone, eh, chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ngacho elukshumayela so sayingi, saying, saying, saying shumayela no na abantu la. I think it's enough. Enough is enough. Everything that belongs to us should be get back to us. Abantu asema plasin ba shu, back at the moment, they don't even have electricity. Me included, mokmelangtola mas, I must make a call. Before they call again, umlungu should approve, o guti le truck melengele la mas or not. It's going to come to an end and we are going to even form a forum abantu asema plasin. If it needs us who to see the level of man, we will do that. And abantu asema plasin, they should be heard as well. Thank you.
My name is Moshe Magi. I'm from Fofa Farm in Plot 89. I'm here to say that this bill should be implemented. Eh, there is no need to argue about this because what belongs to people should be given back to the people. There is no need for us to argue because what these people did was to confuse us, giving us this thing and that thing. But now we are saying that we want our land back. Eh, they should not fight against us because the white men just came and removed people from the farms. Eh, what should happen is that this bill should succeed. Succeed, what we are here for should succeed. And I'd like to apologize chair for, for facing the people because I'm used to preaching. Eh, that is, that's what happened. And right here, I'm here to say that this is enough. Enough is enough. The land should be given back to the people. Because where I come from, whenever I need electricity or if I need water, I have to make a call and it's the white men who approves whether the truck should come or not. It's about time that we as farm dwellers create forum for farm dwellers and we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kili medishay mahoshi. Kili medishay the all the parliamentarians and the whole community. Um, thanks the parliament for bringing this thing to the people so that you can hear mouthfully what we have to say about this one. Um, I'm definitely not in support of the bill because of the following things.
Excuse me, you haven't told about, you haven't told us your name.
Oh, yes. Alright, my name is Jeff Muraladi. I'm from Mamelodi, Mamelodi Far East, Edward Town. I'm definitely not in support of the bill. Eh, I'm going to raise the following points. Eh, ladies and gentlemen, chairperson, the apartheid has long passed, but still we are blaming it for our obvious failures. So, according to the South African constitution, South Africa belongs to all those who live in it. And now, we are failed by the current government because they took the power with an opposition mentality. That's why they've got no idea of what to do. Now, do we trust the current government of our precious asset which is the land? No. Do we even trust the government which is led by the ANC and supported by the EFF over the issue of land? No. We cannot support EFF because today they can say Zuma must fall, tomorrow they go to Kandla and drink tea with Zuma. We cannot support those people. So, and secondly, we having problem, our, our own government cannot even distribute RDP houses. People don't have title deed. Government is holding title deed to themselves so that people cannot have a full ownership of their own houses. They keep on wanting to control people. We have stands, we have eh land that is, that is left alone. And then we have got people, we've got comrades who are selling stands to poor South Africans. Then still we want to trust the very same eh ANC government. The government that is destroying each and every entity that we have. Each and everything that we have, this government is destroying. We are running in short of money, everything is not working. Our economy is down because of this government. So, can we really support this government? No. Can we trust them with our land? No. Land cannot go to gov, to, to, to government, more especially the government which is led by ANC. If it was another government, then we could have been saying the another issue. But the, the government which is led by the ANC cannot be trusted by anything eh when it comes to land. Because land is the welfare of our own people. We have to be careful when we do such kind of things. It's very much fair, it's very much unfair when you have the whole portion of land, but you are selling it to people who need it for free. So, this current bill, the, the current land restitution and eh land reform has got no problem, it's okay, we can continue with it. And then let us avoid scoring cheap political points by playing with the issue of land because it's a sensitive issue. Thank you very much.
Eh, my father, when I was young during the riots...
Who are you?
I will tell the name. During the riots, during the riots, my father used to go around collecting victims who have been shot by the police. And after we moved to Wandebele, Ekangala, he became a representative eh, representing the community in the local area.
My name is Temba Muing. I'm from Region 5. Eh, I feel it is, oh, I'd like to say I welcome the bill by the way. And I feel it has come too late though. Why do I say it has come too late? I say it has come too late because if the bill was to come, it was supposed to give our leaders, our traditional leaders, the rightful place where they have power to make decisions and, and, and also act on behalf of their constituencies. Our leaders today are sitting here just like ordinary people. Where they should have been giving eh, 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 a position of authority to be shown that they are being respected and acknowledged as leaders. Not only are they just leaders to, 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 to the government. They are just ordinary people. Because why do I say they are just ordinary people? Because they don't have authority. By authority, I mean financial power. They don't have financial power. If they did, then us as the community here, we wouldn't be struggling with places to stay, where to build and all those things. There are people here who are eh able to establish businesses, but they can't. Because the rules and the regulations that requires them to establish those businesses are too steep for them to be able to acquire those businesses. If you can go out right now, from this garage here, eh engine garage, going to Fraser's, let me just make a short estimation, just to Fraser's supermarket. And go inside and see how many people or young people of these areas have been employed in those establishment. You'll find that majority of the people who are in, employed in those establishment are not South Africans. Our young people have been given grants which is a disabler. They are disabled by this grant system. And it is very much poor thinking to give people land without power. When I say power, I mean money. If you're going to give me land at the age of 21, without any financial resource or know-how, how to deal with that land? What am I going to do with it? Obviously, I'm going to find somebody who has money who's going to invest in my property. In fact, I won't be thinking of investing. I'm going to be sharing that place with that person and they'll be making more money than I should.
Kili medishabu bo chleva chulubame. Eh, wanaveisu brothers and sisters, fellow South Africans, eh, and all protocols observed. Nakenna linda kekana. Ki du la mo brongoro mo faltaki. I have a small holding, a little small holding. And it was not given to me. I bought it, I own it, it's mine. Eh, kibulela, in line with what the ACDP, African Christian Democratic Party, upholds, we are not in agreement li this bill and I will give you reasons why. We acknowledge the need for reformation and restitution on the land question. And section 25 of our constitution makes room for land redistribution. And the question, our question is how this is going to be done? We have lived with white people for as long as. And I cannot tell that sister over there and that brother over there say pack up and leave. We can't do that. But we agree with the fact that people have been dispossessed of their land and rightfully, they should be recompensated. But those people who over the years have bought machinery, have till the land, have, have seen to the food supply that all South Africans eat and all that need to be recompensated adequately for the work that they have done. That is the stance eritwaring. And I will just give my own little personal observation of what I have seen. A lot of farms have been given to those people that are buddies perhaps, that have the right political connections within government. A few really, those that need to be shut up who have been given that. So, they give them the farms with all the implements and so on. And this is what I have seen. There's several milk farms or, you know, farms that are in Bronco Sprade that have been given to our people as cooperatives. Nothing is happening there. The machineries have been wasted, implements taken, di chipidi areki siwa. And nothing over the years has happened, nothing tangible has happened. So, what are we saying? Are we saying that we throw the baby with the bathwater? Or are we going to take what is good, what is already existing that is good, make good on that and move together as South Africans? As my brother just said here that this land, South Africa, belongs to all who live in it. And having said that, I'm just saying, we are not for the bill as it is. But section 25 of the constitution has already covered that. And we should go by that, not the new resti...
Eh, siyabonga, siyabulela. Thank you to all those that presented their views. I know we would not all speak, but... But much as you did not speak, your view was presented to us. We are taking all this information. We will sit as the portfolio committee and discuss all your views. And we'll present that to the parliament. But we'll only do that when we are true with the public hearings. This is the fourth province that we are in. And this is the first eh district that we have visited in Khauteng. There are three more that we are visiting tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday. And next week, we are going to another province. All your views are important to us. We have recording devices. And we are also taking notes. So, all your views are important. Siyabonga bonda besita. Eh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.